I call the order doors. You call the store.
Yep.
I'd like to welcome you all to these evening's festivities. We have a new council to be sworn in tonight. And before we do that, Mayor Montanari has a presentation.
Okay, we're gonna do that before the pledge?
Pledge.
Yeah, we're gonna do the pledge first.
Yes.
Steve, can you leave us some pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I believe we have invocation with Chris Skorodick from the Center Point Church. Hi, Chris.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we pause our hearts and minds for just a moment before you. We're grateful for the life and the blessings that we enjoy in Weathersfield, and we ask your special blessing tonight upon each man and woman here that you've called to serve our town. Their service will not always be an easy or pleasant task. Each of them knows their service to this community will come with a price. Time away from their families, decisions and challenges that will weigh heavy on their hearts and minds, a call to respond in emergencies, the need to resolve the differences that will inevitably come up between them, and how to accomplish goals set before them. But Father, we ask that you would grant them your wisdom and your strength as they serve. We ask you to guide them as they lead for the benefit of our community. We ask you to bless their families, to quietly support them. And Father, we ask that you would give them the uncommon ability to create a clear vision for the future of our community, work as a team to accomplish the goals before them. We dedicate each of them to you now, in your great name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. Wanted to take a minute to recognize one of our counselors, who is an outgoing counselor. Stathie Menusus has served the town with dedicated service for six years. I would think it would be a fair statement to say that it would be an understatement if people thought we agreed on a lot of things. But Stathie is a passionate leader in our community. His competitive spirit, his energy, and his contributions over the last six years have been very important to all of us that have sat at the dais. I personally have great respect for him. He's a great family man, a great dad, a great husband, very dedicated to our community. And I consider it a privilege to serve with him the whole time that he's been here. I'm pleased to provide really a small token of appreciation to Stathie for his service from the town. Stath. Okay, we're gonna administer the oath.
Okay, why don't we come up front?
Okay.
Ms. Jody and Amy.
Jody and Amy, come up.
I go step aside?
Yeah.
Pull everything?
Pull everything.
So through you now, and then we'll take the oath. Michael Dowell, Donna Hammond, Anthony Spinella, Mike Hurley, Amy Bello, Jody Latina, Steve Berry, Tony Martino, and Paul Montanari. So if you've already shared your hand, repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will
Sowfully swear that I will.
faithfully discharge my duties
faithfully discharge my duties.
as members of the Weathersfield Town Council
as members of the Weathersfield Town Council
according to the Constitution of the United States of America
according to the Constitution of the United States of America
the Constitution of the State of Connecticut
the Constitution of the State of Connecticut
and the Weathersfield Town Charter
and the Weathersfield Town Charter
to the best of my abilities
to the best of my abilities.
so help with that.
so help with that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, we do have the seats. They can go back to original seats. And we do have the extra ones. We have seats for everyone. And you all have red roses.
Yeah, we'll do that before we start. Stathie, I know you had some comments, so come up before we start. Yeah, before we start, come on up.
I can't put it on, so I'm gonna leave it right there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, I guess here.
Which side?
Left side.
Paul, before Stathie says something, could I?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So I just want to say, I was honored to be a friend of Stathie's and sit next to him for the last six years. I know he assured our town stayed in great financial health as the chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee during our first two terms. And I want to thank him for bringing his energy to all our council meetings.
I would also like to just thank Stathie. Stathie's been a friend since we were kids, playing soccer in town together. And no one in this community is as committed to doing what they think is best for the town and its residents. And Stathie, whether it's through soccer, whether it's through Pine Acres, whether it's through this body, it's been an honor to serve with you. And Stathie definitely gives his all, no matter what arena he's in. So he will be missed, and it has been an honor to serve with you.
Stathie, I too would like to wish you well. Your first two years in office, you sat on one side of the budget table. I sat on the other side as an employee. And he really did grill and question every item in the budget. So thank you for your years of service.
Stathie, I'm gonna miss you. You've bring a lot of value to the town, and you brought a lot of value to the council. And certainly that is appreciated. Your financial skills really showed through during our budget sessions. And your participation on Budget and Finance was very important to the town. And we appreciate that, and we'll certainly miss you here.
Stathie, I too will miss you. I kind of felt like a judge at Wimbledon, sitting between you and the mayor. Sometimes I'd look this way and then that way, lobbing back and forth. But you taught me a lot while I was on the council with you. Your knowledge and your commitment to the town of Weathersfield, be it through town council or through soccer, is second to none, and you will sorely be missed. But I look forward to working with you in the future.
You have the floor.
Thank you. No, I really, I appreciate all the kind words. I truly do. I've really enjoyed my time on the council these last six years. And I really enjoyed serving with everybody here, believe it or not. I do. I did. And especially those counselors too, that were in prior councils that may not be here tonight. Jeff Bridges, I've worked closely with when I was Chair of Budget and Finance, and I appreciate him. Town staff, department heads, they've all been great to work with, very knowledgeable, very professional. And I learned a lot from them. We had important work to do. We always managed to have, you know, fun at it. I think you have to enjoy what you're doing to be successful at it. And I certainly tried to do that here. And I tried to make everyone around me have that same feeling. I want to thank all those residents, friends, acquaintances who supported me over the years. Some I didn't really even have the chance to get to meet along the way, but I hope that I will someday, soon. Especially want to thank my wife Lisa. I'm not even sure if she got here yet, but
She's here.
She is here, okay. And I know my kids aren't here. They still don't like to hang out with Dad yet. Anyways, I really want to thank my wife Lisa and the kids and the family who unconditionally supported me over the years and even helped on the campaign trail. You know, as with any volunteer work, I think, like Chris said, public service does come at the expense of family. And I'm thankful that my family understood this sacrifice, and they supported me. And I know Lisa's very happy to see me at home right now. She didn't waste any time. If you could see the size of the honeydew list, it would drive anybody back to public service right now. So some say, public service is a thankless volunteer job, and in many cases, they may be right. However, at the end, when I look back at these years, I feel that I've been generously rewarded in a couple ways. First, by seeing our accomplishments and knowing that we were, that they were done for the betterment of the town. And that's, you know, everybody here who was a part of those. And even more rewarding was just having the opportunity to meet with so many residents along the way, many of whom, you know, I'm happy to say have become friends. And these are people who I may not have otherwise had the chance to meet. So I feel blessed and thankful for the time, my time on council. And I wish the newly-elected council the best of luck in the future. I'm sure they will serve the town very well. Thank you.
Thanks, Stath. Okay, I believe we're gonna accept nominations for Chair.
I'll open the floor to have nominations for Chair Person or Mayor of Weathersfield.
I would like to say that last week I saw an article that said, put out by WalletHub.com, which ranked more than 1,200 small cities in the U.S. with a population between 25,000 and 100,000 residents, according to various criteria, including an analysis of affordability, economic health, education, health, and overall quality of life. Last week, the Current published an article, "What's the Best Small City in Connecticut?", based on that study. Weathersfield was rated number one. Surrounding towns in the top 10 were Manchester at number three, Newington number four, and West Hartford at number six. This happened due to the leadership of our current mayor. We need to keep Weathersfield number one moving forward. I am proud to nominate Paul Montanari as Mayor of Weathersfield for a second term.
Thank you, Tony. Do we have a second?
I'll second the nomination of Mayor Montanari. Over the nearly a decade, he's given his life to public service and serving this town. He's seen it grow, both economically as well as in diversity. He's led not only the Democratic Party, but really the people of Weathersfield. And over the last few months, I've seen how much he truly cares about this town. And I don't think there's any better choice to lead the town council than Mayor Montanari.
Thanks, Anthony.
Are there any other nominations?
Seeing none, we'll move the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. And thank you. So, I don't do anything formal. It's my comments, right? The gavel doesn't have to move, thankfully. I just have some brief comments I wish to share with all of you here. Thank you for coming this evening. It's an important night for us, culmination of several long months of campaigning and working on behalf of the town. I can't tell you how pleased I am to be able to continue to service the Weathersfield that I love as your mayor. It's been a very fun two years. I'm looking forward to working harder even the next two. When I took the oath of office two years ago as your mayor, you might remember I pledged a couple of things to our community. First, in the area of education, I pledged that we would work very hard to open up negotiations with the Board of Education and work with the administration, and have an open dialogue of fairness and collaboration. And over the two-year period, we met dozens of times with the board, with the administration. We drilled into many of the aspects that derive, I would say, is a sensible and fiscally prudent budget. But almost more importantly, those negotiations led to changes in the education system that got us a security director and a math program. And you'll all recall that we did jointly as a full council support the CIP efforts that got us an Emerson Williams new gym floor, which everybody was very pleased to see happen, I'm sure, as well as the cafeteria. In our first term, the first year of our term, people will remember, we ran into some difficult times with the high school renovation with the result of asbestos and PCB abatement that threatened to set back our community and take our flagship school that was online offline. Through the work of our delegation, and I want to mention that Russ Morin's here tonight, Paul Doyle's here, Tony Guerrero, those were our fighters in the trenches that got us $10 million of space waiver that kept our high school renovation on time and in budget. So that's a huge accomplishment, and I think we all went in and worked hard on that. You'll recall that I talked about business and economic development, probably the most important thing that we worked on in the last two years. I will share with you that I've been very fortunate in my life to have worked with some wonderful business mentors and to have the opportunity to run my own businesses and to learn a little bit about what makes business tick, what makes business decisions happen. When I took office two years ago as the mayor, I absolutely committed myself to changing the playing field for Weathersfield. We needed to recognize that the sluggish stagnation that we saw, the empty buildings that we saw as we drove through town, particularly on the Salas Dean, were an impediment to maintaining the reputation that Weathersfield has always had as long as I've been here and beyond. I rolled up my sleeves and worked with business owners, worked with developers, and I think the results speak for themselves. They're undeniable. Dozens of new businesses have come to town in the last two years. We have filled empty buildings everywhere. And the stagnation, I think, is in the rearview mirror. The former Weight Watchers, which we announced before the election, is probably one of the bigger ones, more notably, but not the most important. It's the little engines that could. It's the D and D markets and the Weathersfield diners and the air nose and throat that went into the building that Harvey Sprong did as a spec. The walk-in medical center on Salas Dean, CBS up in Putnam Plaza, the list goes on and on. People are beginning to believe in Weathersfield again as an economic, viably strong and growing community. And when we talk about tax relief for our seniors and for our residents, which we all believe in, all sides of the aisle, I believe that grand list growth that comes out of those efforts will really give us notable relief as we go into next year, along with hopefully good fiscal prudence on the part of our full council. And I'm not done yet, by the way. We're working on a lot of very significant projects. I've got a bead's eye on the next areas of concern. Everybody talks about the Fun Zone. I can tell you that a lot of work is being done on that project. Potentially, I've got a vision that will make Weathersfield greater, and we're gonna continue to work very hard to see that happen. The last area that I talked a little bit about when I took office was across the aisle collegial collaboration. And this has been probably the most difficult area, sitting in the mayor's seat, that I raised and continue to raise for the progress of our town. I'm told by former mayors and deputy mayors and people that I know in town that used to be, both sides were a little bit more civil, that dissent was accepted as a little bit more of a part of the process. But then at the end, there would be reach out and agreement, and that people would even go out after council meetings across the aisle and share a drink for their successes. I know, having served on this council for almost 10 years, that regardless of who was in lead, whether it was Donna as mayor, or Andy as mayor, or myself as mayor, we all deeply believe in the Weathersfield that we want. We all do. It's not Democrat. It's not Republican. It's a Weathersfield that we all want to see better. We may disagree on how to get there. We may disagree about what the priority should be. But at the end of the day, I believe that we need to raise the bar to work together to get it there. I pledge to you again, as mayor, for my next two years, to respect those ideas and reach out again. I turn to Donna, and Mike Rel, and Jody, and Mike Hurley, and I say to them each, please bring your ideas now. Don't sit back and wait. I'm open. Our team is open. We want to achieve together, and I need them to be active with me, collegially, collaboratively, with great respect. If we do that, if we engage honestly now, not in May, when the budget process is done, but now, tell me their priorities and share them. I pledged you to work very hard to make that a part of our agenda and a part of our achievement. I know we can achieve together. I know we can. I know we can do it together. And I pledge to do it. But we must raise the bar. And then maybe we will share a toast at Lucky Lose after we finish the budget together in the spring. When we talk about accountability, accountability starts with us. People expect us to go beyond politics. The campaign's over. It's done. It was spirited. There were some good moments. There were some moments that weren't so great. But that's done, and I pledge to work very hard with this group to make Weathersfield better. If we take that as our benchmark, each individually, let's make Weathersfield better, then we'll all come to the table, and we will do that. So let's change that starting tonight. I welcome your insights and your ideas, your intelligence, your energy, your spirit. I know we can set a positive productive tone for the next two years for this town. Why? Because you guys are sitting in the audience. You know why we're here. We're here because we love you guys, we love Weathersfield, and nobody differs on that. Finally, I want to thank our campaign committee. We had tons of campaign door knockers, amazing strategists, some of them are here tonight. We did have a miraculous group who could get a mailer out in the same day, believe it or not. And we also had young Dems in great numbers who were working like dogs on election day to get out the vote. Many of us who were sitting in the Episcopal church will know that it looked like the pit over at Wall Street. Phones are going, people are running, slips of paper are flying. It was very exciting. When we came over late in the afternoon, I realized that John Galavan had captured the spirit of our young Dems. And that made a big difference. So everybody, I pledge again, we're gonna work harder. We're gonna get those results continuing, and we're gonna have a vision for Weathersfield that's even greater. And I can't tell you enough about how grateful I am to sit in this seat and work for you. Thank you. So, we have an election for our vice chair, and I have the distinct honor to nominate Steve Berry in that role. Steve Berry, as you know, has served as deputy mayor for the last two years with me. The entire Berry family has a reputation in town for service and excellence. I know his mom and dad are sitting in the audience tonight, and they're gonna be embarrassed I even mentioned it. But the truth of the matter is, Steve's strength and commitment to service came from that very good lineage. He's a quietly competent leader. He speaks quietly, but he carries great strength. I've turned to him as a friend many, many, many times outside the dais. And he always gives me this quiet, competent perspective. Like, "Paul, I don't think you should do that. I think you should do this." And he's always on the mark. He has served our community in so many ways behind the scenes. He's a great dad, great husband. His wife Leah's here, his kids are here. I'm sure they're all smiling back there. He's a representative of what we want Weathersfield to be at its best. And he has served, obviously, with the Building Committee, a huge task that has been very challenging. And he's navigated that group through and kept us all informed about the progress. But his service goes far beyond that. It's got tentacles in our community in ways that all of you know. I'm proud to nominate him as deputy mayor, to continue to serve by my side, to do the great work we've done. And most importantly, I'm very proud to call him my friend. A second?
It's my honor to second the nomination of Steve Berry as deputy mayor of the town of Weathersfield. He's a neighbor and a friend, and has proven to be a thoughtful and capable deputy mayor over the past two years. I'm confident that he will continue to work for the good of the community and help to lead us over the next two years.
Thank you, Amy. Any other nominations? Seeing none, move the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. I'll be brief, as I think I'm getting a reputation for being brief when I speak. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve as deputy mayor for the past two years. And I truly appreciate and appreciate your vote of confidence in me doing that for the next two years. I have to thank my family, my dad, Edith, my wife Leah, my sons Matt, Mike, and Brendan. Matt and Mike were able to come here from school. So it's truly an honor to have them here and to share this time with me and with all of us. They recognize my commitment to this community, and I appreciate them coming and recognizing me by being here as well. Moving forward, I'll echo Paul's comments, the mayor's comments, about why we all are involved and why we all do this. Everyone here, Republican, Democrat, is giving to the town because they care about the town. I got involved in politics two years ago for that very reason. I came wanting to bring a positive energy, some vision, and also a level of professionalism to how we conduct ourselves in council session. I hope I've done that. I think, moving forward, we will all do that. I look forward to working with Mike Hurley, Jody Latina, Mike Rel, Donna Hammond, and my counselors to my right, and with the mayor. We've got a big two years. We have to keep the momentum going on economic development. It does require hard work and determination, and it requires some vision. The high school, in the next two years, we certainly will be turning over, really, what is our flagship of our school system. It's an exciting time, but that's gonna be done in the next, in this term. So these are exciting times for the town. I know we can all work together and get what we think, get done what we think is best for the community. Again, we'll disagree at times, but at the end of the day, know that all of us care deeply about Weathersfield and want to make Weathersfield a community that we all can be proud of, that our children can come back to if they so choose, and their children as well. So I thank you for the honor and the privilege to serve again. And let's have a great two years and do some very good things for our community.
Thank you, Deputy.
Counsel comments. Mike?
Sure. I just want to thank everybody who voted for me. And I look forward to working together for the good of the town with a commitment to fiscal responsibility and transparency. We will disagree, but we are all doing what we think is right for the town.
Thank you, Mike. Mike, Rel?
First, I want to apologize. It's usually me who's reading my son bedtime stories that gets him to fall asleep, but it may just be the voice of politicians that does it. But more importantly, I would like to thank my family who's here, my wife, my two kids, my in-laws are here. Thank you for your support. Thank you for staying up with me late on certain campaign nights, as well as waking up early with me on others. I'd also like to thank the people of Weathersfield for entrusting in me. Two more years on your town council. the people of Weathersfield for entrusting in me. Two more years on your town council, I appreciate those, like Mike said, who came out and voted for me. I would also like to mention that going forward, that I'll take you at your word, Mayor, and that we will be part of the process. We would also like to be part of the process and know about what's going on with decisions that are being made, be it three days or three hours. A good heads up and knowledge of what's being discussed would be, would be beneficial to this side of the aisle. With that, I appreciate you guys coming out tonight. Thank you.
I would also like to thank the community for their support. I look forward to the next two years working together to try to move the town forward. I think I'm probably the elder on the council now, for sure, and bring lots of, not only years of experience, but good insight. So, I look forward to working with both sides of the aisle and moving the town forward.
Thank you, Donna. Jody?
Just wanted to say thank you so much to everybody who supported me throughout the last two years on the Board of Education. It's not an easy job, but it was one that I really learned a lot from, and I'm so proud to be here tonight before you. I want to thank all of my Republican, my Democrat, and my independent colleagues who voted for me and supported me in this endeavor, my family and my friends. Like everybody up here, we all give of our time, and we're away from a lot of the important things in our lives, but this obviously is bigger than all of us, and we're here for that very reason. So, I just wanted to say, I hope that over the next two years, we can all do some really wonderful things together. This town is fabulous, and we really have much more to do, and we're gonna do it together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Tony?
First of all, I'd like to thank my family for giving me the opportunity to run and serve again and take, and help the citizens of Weathersfield. Also, to the voters for having the confidence to vote me back in again. When I retired, I said I wanted to give back to the community that was good to me and my family. You gave me one term to do that. We got a lot done. You've given me a second term so we can continue with that process. I realize we have a lot of seniors in town on fixed incomes. I'm one of them. I know we have a lot of young families struggling to survive. We do want to keep the taxes as low as we can. There's, you know, over the past two years, we have worked to bring businesses to town. We've worked with the board on shared services. We've made some efficiency improvements, and there's more to be made. I look forward, over the next two years, continuing that process so we can do more for the benefit of the people of Weathersfield, because I want to see Weathersfield stay the best small city in Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Amy?
I'm very excited to be on the town council. It's my first experience in politics and elected office, and I'm glad I'm going to share it with this great group of people. I too would like to thank my family. They've put in hours helping me campaign, write postcards, make phone calls, and I appreciate everything they've done for me. Also, the Democratic Town Committee and the Young Dems, what a great group that I've got to know and work with, and all their support and everything they've done for me and the rest of us to get us elected. And lastly, I need to thank the voters of Weathersfield for electing me. What an honor, and what a great feeling to know that you're trusting me to make the decisions on your behalf. I look forward to spending the next two years working with all of you and hopefully put our political affiliations aside and do what's best for the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Anthony?
I'd like to take a minute to thank my family as well, most of who are here. My wife Chanel has been a huge support to me. My brother Paul's been my education advisor throughout this process. My brother Tom, who really couldn't get involved as much as I think he would have liked to because of his job. And lastly, my parents, who've been a huge help to me. My mom has been there for everything I've asked of her, and I know she always will be. And my father, who's really my hero, who I look up to on almost every decision I make. Senators Doyle and Ciato were my political mentors. I'm a complete novice to politics, so I will have a learning curve, but I can assure you that I will work as hard as I possibly can for the people of Weathersfield. Unlike a lot of politicians, I will represent everyone, the people who voted for me, the people who didn't vote for me, and the people who didn't vote at all. I truly will represent what the people of Weathersfield want and do that to the best of my ability. So, I thank everybody for supporting me, and I'm happy to be a member of the town council.
Thank you, Anthony. Before we have the benediction, I just want to acknowledge our town manager, Jeff Bridges. Jeff has been an outstanding CEO, if you will, for the town of Weathersfield for as long as I've been on council, a tireless worker, very dedicated to the improvement of Weathersfield. And I'm sure he's cringing that I'm recognizing him at the dais, but the truth of the matter is, a lot of the great work that we've done over the last seven years has been a result of his hard work, and he deserves some real recognition. So, I wanted to make sure we mention that. Chris?
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Two things. We did change email domains this morning, so if you want to stick around after the meeting, IT's in the conference room. They can help you reset your devices. For the new council members, your iPads are also back there. There'll be a training session for you on how to get your information, so.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris.
Congratulations to all of you. I'm pleased with many members of the faith community that pray for you every day. So, we're proud to serve and help any way we can. Let's pray. Almighty God, we're blessed to live and to work in this place we call our home. Bless our town and bless these public officials as they, in a very special way, serve us. Would the plans, the programs, the vision you give this council create the opportunities we need to grow and improve as a community? Would they continue to move us in a bright and blessed future? May your blessing cover them and remain with them. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chris. Thanks for being here. Before we adjourn, I just want to thank all of you for being here, family, friends, colleagues, supporters, observers. We appreciate you taking the time. I'm sure I speak on the whole council, and I tell you, we're ready to roll up our sleeves and get to work. So, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Hey, council members, if you want to wait one minute, we need a picture for the guide. So, line you up out front, take a picture for the county's calendar, real quick.